All right, what do they call the order of the town council meeting right on time? Mutual committee?
Let me turn this on. All right. So we're calling to order the September 12th, 2022 Signal Mountain Town Council meeting. And we'll start with the College of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll have a moment of silence. Here the roll call, please.
Councilmember Elizabeth Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Vicky Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Andrew Gardner.
Here.
Vice Mayor Suzanne Murnedoff.
Here.
Mayor Charles Pos.
Here. Thank you. All right, we have three sets of minutes. We can do them all at once unless anybody, does anybody have anything to add or to or change with the minutes? All right, we got July 11th, August 8th, and August 22nd.
May to approve.
Second.
All right, no changes required, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
First go, Bob, first.
Yes. The minutes are really good, whoever's doing them is doing a good job putting them together, by the way. The next item on the agenda is citizens' opportunity to address council. We have someone's raising their hand. So if you'll, I don't know if you've ever done this, but if you'll come up to the podium and let us know your name and address, and then we'll have, look forward to hearing from you.
Yeah, Brad Case or James B. Case, live at 906 James Boulevard, sent all of y'all about two, two and a half weeks ago a little letter about a sidewalk proposed over here, which I think would be very beneficial, not only beneficial, but would probably save a child's life walking back and forth to the pool. We've got crosswalks on the highway, we don't have a cross, we got one for the library up here, and I venture to say that more kids go to that pool than go to that library.
Well, you got the librarian here, she's gonna have to differ. We got a lot of families that have joined the library recently.
But, I'm not questioning that, but there's still, there should be a crosswalk on James. And I would challenge any of y'all to take that little walk someday, there's no place to get out of the road.
You're talking about right out here?
Right out here.
Okay.
That's not why I'm here tonight, though, which, I'm here tonight because of my concern about the traffic on James Boulevard. You've got the, one of the only big schools, elementary schools, and there are kids every day that walk back and forth to that during the school year. There's probably over 50 walkers, and I'd say that's very small amount, but there's more than that, that walk and jog at all times of the day, up and down James Boulevard, most of them on the sidewalk, some of them in the streets. From the highway down here to Shackle Ridge Road, or not Shackle Ridge, Timberlands, the speed limit's 30 miles an hour. Any car that wants to travel, that wants to go to the highway, they have to reduce their speed to 20 if they go off the hill down Maryland, or 25 to get off to the highway. That's where the traffic belongs, is on the highway, that's why they call them highways. They don't, James Boulevard, I've been, lived up here over 30 years, my wife was raised, born and raised up here. The speed limits up here used to all be the same, and for some reason, over the years, they've been changed to 25 here and there, but Signal Mountain, James Boulevard is 30 miles an hour, and I can promise you, when I'm cutting my grass on James Boulevard 906, especially up by the road, I have to be very careful because of cars running by me, running in excess of 45 to 50 miles an hour. And that's, I would like, I went by and said something to the police department, the chief, they run, they run the radar deal there, and it, maybe it helps a little, it doesn't help a lot. And he told me that I needed to talk to y'all, so that's why I'm here. And I would like for y'all to put it under consideration to change the speed limit on James, and/or put some stop signs, three-way stops down through there, to slow the traffic down, and move it over to the highway where blocks. That's all I've got to say.
All right, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thanks for your comment. All right, is there anyone else here who'd like to speak to the council?
Dick Graham, I live at 405 James. I concur with everything he said. We have them flying by our house, too, down there, so. And one thing, I'll get to what I'm, you're really here for in a minute, but people running and walking at night, or at dusk, is a real problem on James. And if they would wear some light colored clothing or reflective strips, that'd be one thing, but they tend to run in black for some reason, and that's really tough. So I'll add to him and...
Is it still 30 where you live, or is it, seems like it'd be lower?
It's 25 down there, I think. Yeah, it is, because Cheryl reminds me to do 25 all the time. But it's the runners and walkers, and crazy thing, too, is they'll be walking in the street, and three feet to their right is a sidewalk, a bran, almost brand-new sidewalk, so, you know.
Almost brand-new?
Yeah, yeah. It was, almost brand-new means 15 years ago, probably.
A year, huh?
Yeah, it's not broken out.
Because most of them, most of them, it's a death trap to walk on the sidewalk.
It's from the Presbyterian Church on down to the corner up there, but, but yeah, it's a real problem. And one more thing, while we're on that, at the corner of Maryland and James, they don't intersect like this, they intersect in a cute angle there. At night, particularly in the wintertime, when you're making that turn from Maryland onto James, your headlights are nowhere near where they need to be, looking at that street at James. There needs to be another streetlight there, it's really dark. And that goes along with the joggers at night, when they're jogging in the wintertime, you know, when they're jogging at 5 o'clock in the wintertime, it's dark. And that's really a blind place there to make that turn, so a nice streetlight there would be good, too. Okay, I think that's all there is, I've got on that. Really came here to talk about the MAC, tell you what's going on there. The, we have coming up, a lot of events coming up in October, in September. The coffee, concert and coffee with the Chattanooga Symphony is on the 15th, this Thursday, and we had one last spring, and it was really well-attended, got a lot of people coming in in the morning, and we provide the coffee, Symphony provides the concert, it's all free. We do take donations, we're happy to get donations anytime, but it's all, all free if you just want to come. On September 17th, we have a benefit concert that John Har put together, he's on our board, and he's going to be performing, Mike Crowder will be performing Anthony Quails and Blue Mountain, and it's a benefit, part of the money will go to the MAC, and part of the money will go to the David and Tina Har Memorial Notre Dame High School Scholarship Fund, so we're splitting the proceeds on that. The Chattanooga Improv, they hold classes at the MAC every week, and then they, once a month, they have a performance, so they're going to be having their performance on the 24th, and there's actually two shows. The early show at 7:30 is the more family-oriented show, and at 9 o'clock, it's a little more adult, so I'm glad to have anybody come to that. On the 29th, we have art exhibit opening at the MAC, Dana Shaven, her work will be there from the 29th to the, to October 13th, I believe it is. And, let's see, on September 30th, October 1st, 7th, 8th, and 9th, the Mountain Arts Theater will be presenting a play called Ten Cat Shoes, and I can't hardly begin to tell you what it's about, but it's an interesting play. It generally is about a group of shoe store employees who are forced to go on a team-building exercise in the woods, and it doesn't go well. So it's a, it's a comedy, and Dennis Parker is putting that on, he's producing that. In October, we have the October Market at MAC coming up, we also have Oktoberfest on October 15th. The Briers will be playing, along with some other groups later on in the month. The, we have our Town Council Candidates Forum on the 20th, and even though we just have three candidates running for three seats, I think it's a good time for everyone to meet the candidates, meet who will be, all of you will be future candidate, future council members again, so to meet everyone, ask questions, we're putting together a list of questions now, and just see where everybody stands on everything.
And I really appreciate you guys taking the time to organize that, because like you said, even though there's just three candidates, I hate uncontested races, yet I'm sitting in one, because it really, when you have contested races, there's such an opportunity for civic engagement, and I was really sad to see us running in an uncontested race, because I worry about that, and so I can't tell you how much I appreciate you, you know, the Preservation Fund, the leaders of the Preservation Fund, taking the time and organizing that event to really increase civic engagement, because everybody wins. So thank you.
And we're going to be doing some other things in the next few months, we hope to try to get more citizen involvement in the government and awareness of what's going on. You can see the huge crowd we have here tonight, you know, so hopefully we can get some more interest going. We also have, at the end of October, we have, the radio play will be presented, The War of the Worlds. We did this a few years ago, prior to COVID, and it was a big success, so we're going to try that again, have that on. Our clay studio that we've been raising money for and constructing for the last few months, we had hoped to have open by now, but as almost everything goes these days, there's delays in getting products. So we were promised our pottery wheels the middle of August. I asked the company in early August, is that still a good date, and I didn't hear from them, which is bad news. Finally, the end of August, after they didn't arrive, in the middle of August, end of August, they let me know it's now going to be the middle to late November before they arrive, so. So we're held up a little bit on that, but we're, we're also continuing to raise money for the recording studio. We've off to a kind of a slow start, maybe not a slow start, we've raised about 2,000 of the 20 or so thousand we're going to need for the recording studio, but we're optimistic that we're going to reach our goal and get that up and running, too. So that's it. I have for you all...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the town council? All right. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the reinstatement of the temporary beer permit, so we are acting as the beer board at this point, and we have an application by Paul David Smith, better known as Moose, for another beer permit.
I'd like to make a motion to waive the fee. Second.
All right, any questions? No? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No? All right, that passes. Back to us being the town council, we have a number of resolutions to go through. The first is a resolution authorizing the award of a contract to Chase Reline Incorporated for three combined stormwater pipe replacement projects in an amount not to exceed $225,500, and authorizing the town manager to execute any necessary documents in connection with this award. We have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions about this? They had a very thorough bid process and contract and everything.
Really did.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? No? All right.
Do we know what the budget amount was for this?
3,700, yeah, 371,000.
370, yeah. That was the budgeted amount?
Yeah, so we came in, what is that, 140,000 under, which I'm wondering, so this was from the Art Fund, correct? I mean...
Well, I would like to, I was recommending using Art Funds for this project.
Yeah, and I think...
Three stormwater projects.
And I think like that is good, but now, could we add another one? Because it...
Well, we have one ready to go pretty soon, another project, and we have several stormwater projects, so we're continually working on them, and we're really happy to get such responses out of this bid, because this is the third time that we've done this.
What do you feel like maybe we did differently this time?
I don't know, we did the exact same thing last time, we combined, the first we just did one project, we got more bids, so we combined three projects, thinking we had a bigger pot, you know, we'd get more, more action on it, and then we got nothing, nobody showed up for pre-bid meeting, and then this time, maybe it's just the timing, maybe we're getting back into a better time, and people are actually taking on some of these types of projects.
That's good, yeah.
So, but yeah, we have other stormwater projects in the works.
Okay. That's great, because I do remember, if I remember, I should say, if I remember properly, this was allocated out of Art Funds, and there was 371, so that could be another whole project.
Okay, so, we got, like I said, we got several lined up in different phases, waiting on engineering, or something like that.
Great. It's great to be able to put those Art Funds towards infrastructure needs.
Yes.
All right, the next resolution is a resolution appointing council member Elizabeth Baker and town manager Elaine Brunel as designated representatives for the town of Signal Mountain on the Chattanooga-Hamilton County North Georgia Transportation Planning Organization Executive Board. Do we have a motion for that?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Talked about this number of times, any other discussion needed?
I just appreciate Ms. Baker for stepping up and taking responsibility to do this.
Do you want me to give a number of you...
And you're still going to be the representative of the...
Yes, I'm on TCC.
Yes.
And we meet every other month there, so I do attend those meetings. And then this, what this does is a, it allows our local TPO, Tennessee Planning, Planning Organization, our local, it's allowing them to apply for funds for the Safe Streets for All, SS4A, a discretionary competitive grant dedicated to reducing fatalities and serious injuries on the nation's roadways, and then it will also make those funds available to local governments.
You're a step ahead of us.
Yeah, that's the next one.
But no...
Oh, I'm sorry.
But, yeah, I'm really excited about that one, too. I'm ready to jump the gun on that one.
Yeah, that's okay, we're going to talk about that, and I appreciate it, and maybe I'll ask you to say that again. So for now, we have this, which, what you were talking about arises out of this, the Hamilton County, Chattanooga-Hamilton County North Georgia TPO. So, any discussion needed on this, the motion to appoint Elizabeth and Elaine? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Thank you.
And I agree, Vicky, it's a big job, it's complicated, too, so we appreciate you doing that.
Well, it's learning what all the letters mean, at a high rate of speed, but I'm getting there, and the staff is really amazing as well. But I'm ready for you to read the next one.
Yeah, so, the next one is, "A Resolution of the Town of Signal Mountain to jointly Apply with Chattanooga-Hamilton County Transportation Planning Organization as Lead Applicant to the United States Department of Transportation for Funding Through the Safe Streets for All," that's SS4A, "Grant to Develop a Metropolitan Planning Area Comprehensive Safety Action Plan." So...
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, and now, do you want to...
Now we'll explain.
Yeah, have you explained that again, and then Elizabeth can talk about it as well, because I think she has some...
So, yeah, this came to us from the TPO, our local TPO, and it's a new funding source that's available to the TPO, and they are the applicant. It's funding for the Safe Streets for All discretionary competitive grant program dedicated to reducing fatalities and serious injuries on the nation's roadways. And since they are able to, TPO is the applicant, this, this is basically a letter of support to the TPO, so that we can partner with them, and those funds are available to us as well.
That's great.
It's a zero-match grant, which is even better, yet, so the State Safe Streets for All program is fairly new, or back up and going, I should say, kind of took a break for a while. They're doing some really innovative things with the data, and I wish I knew the, or the website off, if you go to the RPA website, there's a link into the Safe Streets for All, and it's tracking all the data and mapping it live, well, maybe not immediate, but like weekly, on crashes, on accidents, causes, all of that, it's now being tracked, and this is kind of one of those, this is like the grant program that's going to continue to support the Safe Streets Initiative, and very excited about this.
Do they do crosswalks?
They do.
And sidewalks?
Is that what we're, so our goal on this is to do what?
Well, there's no, we don't have a project yet, because the program is just, the grant program is just being created with the money that they're, that they hopefully get for this, so this is just supporting their application to the federal government to get the money to create the program.
Right.
It's also basically saying that if one of, if we apply for a program that meets their program guidelines, which aren't out yet, but will be once they receive the money, that we will take part in applying for the grant.
Okay. Well, it's very exciting, and hopefully we can use that for some projects that'll help our citizens stay safer.
Their evaluation criteria is...
It will come out after they get the money.
Accident, it sounded like the data is based on accidents and...
It, once they apply and receive the money, their program will be set with the criteria and the scoring and all of that.
Okay. Do you, either of you have any role in developing the criteria?
No.
Not that I'm aware of, but I'm still learning, I don't think so, though.
I think that's coming from the parents.
Okay. All right, well, it's exciting news, yeah, I look forward to that. Do we know any kind of timeline for this? We, they send a letter, they, no timeline? All right.
But this does, just a little note, this needs to be signed tonight, because the 15th is actually the deadline to get this into the TPO to attach to their grant program.
Did we vote on this?
Have they voted yet?
We have a motion and a second, and I was so excited, I put the thing aside. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, any other discussion on the topic? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Thank you, you guys, for that. Next resolution is a resolution establishing the Recycle Committee as a subcommittee of the Citizens Advisory Committee for the Town of Signal Mountain, which is also very exciting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay.
Good deal.
We have a motion and a second.
I wonder if, it seems to me, Harry, maybe this is a better question for you first, in the ordinance to create a citizen advisory committee, does the number have to be seven, or can it be, is it up to seven?
I haven't looked at it. I mean, on a subcommittee, I don't think, I mean, as I understand it, the Citizens Advisory Committee is a committee of itself, this is a subcommittee, and I don't think it is limited, I don't think there's a set number of people for...
I just, I just wonder if five isn't a better number for this project, because seven is a lot to get together, and I would like this committee to have some agility, and if you're trying to get a quorum with seven people...
Yeah.
It might be more difficult.
There's six applicants right now, is that correct? That's the last number I heard, when I spoke to Ms. Brunel on Saturday.
I think, to me, a project like this, you know, the more people, not, not too many, but the more ideas you can bring to the table, the better.
We already said six applicants.
That's, that's...
I was looking up to see if there's, if I can find it, but...
There was an email, and then I, in a conversation Saturday, I have, six.
Well, I was, anyway, I don't think I'll be able to find it in time, but we can...
And I may have this switched around with the other email with the applicants that I had, because I was thinking there was only four, but I think that's...
Planning Commission, there's four.
I think that's where my confusion is, I got the two with the two emails.
Any other thoughts on that?
I'm really excited about this project, I will say.
For sure.
Yes.
All right, well, we have a resolution, and we have a motion and a second, so all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No? All right. Next resolution is a resolution authorizing the town manager to enter into affiliation, an affiliation agreement with the University of Tennessee Chattanooga for survey development, implementation, and data collection on the parks of Signal Mountain.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, this is exciting, too, there's some good things coming together right now. And I, I appreciate the Parks Board for, you know, this, you know, figuring out that they had this opportunity and putting it together, so I don't know if anybody from the Parks Board is here, but that's great work.
Yes.
Is there any discussion on this needed?
No, just to kind of echo what you said, this is a great opportunity, and I'm very thankful that our citizens have dedicated their time in finding opportunities like this.
Yeah. Harry, have you had a chance to look over the affiliation agreement?
I have, yeah, Elaine and I talked about it, whether they're off the bay or reservation. And we decided they're off the bay, we're running it, looks fine.
Okay, good deal. All right, well, so we have a motion and a second.
Give a quick shout-out to the Parks Board, but in particular, Rachel Crumless, who kind of spearheaded this, and I guess with a friend that was a professor, kind of discussed this opportunity, and kind of win-win-win-win, providing some students a good opportunity on an internship, we get good data to better understand our parks, so very excited about it.
Excellent. Thank you. All right, so we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No? All right. The next resolution is a resolution appointing Victoria Held to the Town of Signal Mountain's Park Board, Parks Board. Has anybody, well, we don't have a motion, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
How many openings are on the board?
One.
Okay. Is this the only applicant we had?
Yes.
All right. Well, she looks like a pretty good applicant, so...
Yeah, she's got a lot of great qualifications.
Yeah, she's got a lot of great qualifications.
All right, well, any, any discussion needed? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The next is a resolution authorizing the town manager to purchase one Eagle Air Systems Blackhawk CFS breathing air compressor fill station, cascade system, and accessories from NAFCO Incorporated using the NPP Gov Cooperative Procurement Bid for the amount of $52,754 and $65,100 to be used by the Fire Department for the Town of Signal Mountain.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All right. We had this discussion at one of our work sessions. And thankfully, Chief Mitchell, thank you for reaching out to them and getting them to keep this contract amount. So, we appreciate that. Helps the town. Any other discussion?
I really appreciate that this has come in under budget. I think that's a great thing as well, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, that is good.
My other comment.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No. All right. We are down to ordinances, which are, there are none.
Can I?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Can I interrupt real quick?
Yes.
Given that we just passed that resolution for the purchase of the breathing compression, compressor purchase, and it was so far under budget at $17,000, I'm wondering if at the next work session, we could have a budget ordinance to reallocate that money into safer streets. There's some things, some grants that are going on. And I know that there's some things at the police department we're looking at that need managing funds for. So, I'm wondering if we can have a budget ordinance to reallocate the $17,000 and then we can discuss it further at the work session.
Sounds like a fine idea. That's always good when we can save money and help another department in need, so that's a good idea. Anybody have any other thoughts about that? All right.
Sounds like a good suggestion.
All right, so that'll come up at our, our work session. We'll talk about that further. Okay, next item, there are no ordinances for us to consider. Now we have our discussion. We have audiovisual proposals for the council chambers, this room here. And Jennifer is stepping up to the plate.
I think the time for the Zoom meeting was 6:45, so...
Oh, so we're early.
Yes.
But Mr. Webster's here. Can we go out of turn? Is he giving a presentation also?
Well, no. I don't know. I was just supposed to just zoom today to see what's going on other than that.
All right. Do you want to go out of turn or, were you planning on doing a presentation?
Well, I'm here to answer questions. I've been driving since eight o'clock this morning. Got in town at 5:30 from the car after I went through Atlanta's traffic, so my answers may not be clear.
We'll give you a pass, yeah.
Yeah, so, this room has got some issues acoustically. It's got some reverberation in it. And when you do a, you can hear that. Well, it cuts down on intelligibility of speech. And if we were to put some treatment on the walls, the acoustic treatment's a one-inch thick product. It's two feet, about four feet. This is the beige color. But we had suggested that as a minimum, that we do some treatment on the sidewalls, on this back area, and on the sidewall over here, with an option to also do some treatment up here in front. Now, depending on how much treatment is done, it obviously is going to change some of the placement of the historical photos of the former town council members. Hopefully, somebody else would take that on their shoulders if we choose to go that direction. We had talked about treating the upper section behind you and the lower section. That's an option. If we did that, obviously, these photos that are there would need to be relocated. It wouldn't have to all be done at one time. We could do the sidewalls and the back wall and determine if you think that that's enough to satisfy it. And if it's not, then add some additional panels to the, to the front wall. The two other areas, microphones was one. And let's see, we used to have a total of seven, but somehow they've, a couple have disappeared, I think. So, we were talking about adding two more for the, for the dais up here and then replacing this one with a 12-inch mic because this one's a bit long for standing right in front of it. Also, the old wireless handheld mic system that you had, the Federal Communications Commission had outlawed those frequency bands that it used. And so, it interferes with emergency operations from the Fire Department, Police Department, right here. It's time to phase those out. So, we proposed one new handheld wireless system that would, could be wired into the, to the closet mixer.
What is that for now? The wireless system that's, what does that do?
The wireless handheld, that's a mic you could walk around with.
I didn't know we had one of those.
Well, you had, had two. One of them was functioning, the other one wasn't. But the one that was functioning is illegal from a bandwidth standpoint, so it shouldn't be used.
Okay.
We had also talked about incorporating video for streaming or recording. I think from time to time, Sam has had a camera here on the side that's been kind of aimed at the dais and at the lectern here. We had talked about putting a camera on this front wall that would be a pan tilt zoom auto framing camera to pick up whoever might come to speak at the lectern or those in attendance. And then a second camera on this back wall that would cover the dais. We would have a device there that whoever is streaming the meeting or recording it could switch between the two cameras manually. It would be an easy thing to do, to decide, okay, just leave it on the dais or switch if somebody's at the lectern. We had also talked about adding some extra mic cables so that if you have a work session out here in front, you don't have to pull your microphones off the dais up there or at least you can take those mics and use them over here with the extra cables to go into the little recording system that Sam purchased, I don't know, three, four months ago after Dan's was returned to him. We were able to get the Denon flash recorder that you already owned to function. And there's a switch on the wall. I can see it's green, so I know somebody's pushed it. It should be recording the meeting. I don't know if the output from the mixer has been routed to that Denon, but the Denon itself is recording.
Okay.
So, and on the, on panels, we had talked about just having the town personnel be able to mount it. It's a fairly simple thing. You put the impalers on the wall and then panels can hang on those.
All right, so we have a couple of questions. Heard Andrew speak up first.
Go ahead.
Yeah. I'm good with you, go.
I'm pretty ignorant with this stuff, but how, with the acoustic issues we have in here, how do you see, I guess, I don't know, like solving them with the panels versus maybe a digital, more type-like system to eliminate the issues?
I know of no electronic system that can solve room, these are geometric and reflective problems. I know of no electronic system that can solve that. A lot of people buy equipment to do it. It doesn't work. You need to absorb that sound energy before you spend money on electronics.
Is the problem with the reverberation, is it what's being recorded or what the people out there can hear?
It's more what's being heard in the room. You're close enough to the mic now that if it's recorded, it's getting a very good recording.
Right.
But the people out here in the audience or you with each other, you might hear some degree of, what did they say? Or not catch the whole conversation.
Got it. Okay. Elizabeth?
Well, I think one of the reasons we started looking into this is to make it so that it could be turned on and off by a single person, whether that be wired here to the dais, so maybe it's like the town manager or the vice mayor or the mayor. And not just them, but for anybody, any of the citizen committees. So, like, the laptop would be wired here to start it?
The, let's see, if you just want to record the meetings from an audio standpoint, you know, that button system up on the wall beside the door can do that.
No, but to like live stream and videotape?
If you want to stream it, it's going to be, the cameras would need to feed in to a device to say which camera's going to go into the computer and be sent out to the far ends. And you could choose just to do one camera. Maybe you only want to see yourselves, I'll take that back. Maybe your audience, but if you only want this to you guys, it's not so critical about the person speaking here from a head-on shot. That could be done and make it a little bit simpler and that someone wouldn't have to choose which camera. If we went into an auto mode where we told which microphone was being used to have the camera switched it, now we're getting into thousands of dollars. We could do that, but I don't think it's cost-effective.
But what you're proposing is a system that we could use for live streaming that's simple enough where we can, you know, push a button or do something like that to turn it off and record, and start streaming and recording at the same time?
If the, if the laptop, PC, or whatever's being used is set up and the program is opened that you plan to use, then you just push, okay, start streaming, and it would be automatic from that other than somebody needing to select which camera's going to go into it.
Right. Okay. All right. Any other questions?
Oh, it's very helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. All right, we have another presentation in a few minutes. Can you tell us again, Jennifer, who's, who's doing this presentation?
I wish I could.
All right.
I'm a computer operator.
I saw it before, but I don't...
It's in my being, it's called Mood Media.
Mood Media, okay.
I don't know.
Yeah, I guess, I guess.
Are we starting a Zoom meeting?
Yeah. Okay, it won't let me do audio. I, I know that I can hear out of the speakers. I didn't set it up. I don't know. I can't, I can't, my computer...
He assumes that we all know what we're doing once he sets it all up, right?
It's just a projector. I can't pull it up from the laptop, but I can't look it up to that with this. Yeah, I can do it on the laptop, but it's not going to be up on the screen. Because this, we need a V... Yeah, and she might know what's called a murder. And there was a...
Just by screen.
Okay.
That's working.
We don't have to.
Okay. I'm not going to take the phone. Just a...
Yeah. No, personally. Okay. Well, that would be good information for next time.
Well, while we're waiting, I'll wish my friend Vivi Rogers a happy birthday. Today is her birthday. She doesn't live here, so she's probably not getting this message, but I did send her a text.
S, I can't.
It's okay.
It's still better than that one interview day.
Poor, poor Matt Hammond.
Yeah, I think that was the gentleman that got the breath of...
Oh. When I was in a, when I was in high school, I was in a band and I didn't really, none of us knew how to play instruments, but... So, we had a lot of problems. And one of our songs, we used to say, was technical difficulties, where we would spend 20 minutes trying to figure out how to turn our amplifiers on and tune our guitars and all that. So, this is just one of our songs.
So, you're so lucky you guys get to be in charge.
All right. Oh. I don't want to see that.
Hello?
I can see it's picking you up, yeah.
You can turn it toward you so that you can see what you're doing. He's, he's still joining, I think. There we go.
Hello? Can you hear everybody?
I can hear you for sure.
Okay, well, I'm standing right by it, so maybe you can hear the rest of the house.
Can you? Thank you for having me.
Um, let me see if I can, just over there where the mic is. Hi.
Hey, how are you?
Is this loud enough that anybody can hear it back there? No.
I can.
I can.
I did.
Okay.
Okay, well, y'all want to gather round?
We probably need to scoot closer.
Scoot up. We're having a few problems trying to figure out...
Uh, no irony allowed.
Technical difficulties, that's right.
No problem, no problem.
All right, so if you want to get started, I think everybody can see you.
Did you have an agenda for me? I wasn't really given an agenda. Did you want to go over our proposal that we delivered? Where would you like me to start?
Why don't you let us know what it, what it is? We're all, we don't know, we don't know anything about technologies, as you can probably figure out. So, if you can tell us what it is you're proposing for our room and how that might work, we probably have some questions that we can ask after that.
Okay. Okay. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. So here's the scope of work that was generated from our, you know, design conversation, a scoping call, if you will, with Elaine, I believe. You have some, uh, different components here. We sort of broken them down into some general segments, one of which is the audio system. So in, in your case, you're an existing building. You have some equipment, it obviously has some, some pain points for you. But this wasn't a complete throw the baby out with the bathwater kind of situation, for lack of a better term. We, we were gonna build on to some of your existing infrastructure. So in regards to audio, things that you hear or collect audio, you have, uh, if I'm understanding from pictures and conversations, six microphones. Five on the table, one on a podium, and a couple of additional microphone jacks that are unoccupied, if you will. So we were going to match the brand that was there currently and install two new tabletop microphones. So you had increased coverage at the, at the dais. Those microphones, in addition to getting a couple of new ones, we're going to corral those in, to what's called a digital signal processor. And I doubt you want to go into a huge amount of detail, but essentially that sounds for digital signal processor. So we're collecting analog audio in the room, converting it to digital, which allows for a couple of different things. One of which is for us to do echo cancellation, ambient noise filtering. The microphones are generally just more intelligent than analog microphones sitting in a room. They can't really be configured for a room without a mixing board and operators and things like this. So you're getting some more intelligent audio collection, if you will. The, uh, another example of some of the audio equipment that we're, we're using, we use this term or acronym, and a better way to put it is owner furnished equipment. So I think it's in the room behind you and down the hall. You all had a rack with some equipment there, some of which, one of which is an amplifier, which we plan to reuse. We did quote an amplifier. We made a, a note here so that we would have it if needed. But we're planning on you and your, you doing the installation with your current equipment unless a curveball was thrown at us when we got on site. So that's from an audio standpoint. And you already had speakers and things in your ceiling. So that, that's how everything was getting married up in the audio side of things. So I can take a minute, you know, if you want to have any questions there. If you want me to keep moving to the video piece, I can, can do that too. I don't want to run through things too quickly.
Any questions? None so far.
Well, good deal. Well, I'll, I'll, I'll keep giving the information. I'm sure some of them will come up. So part of what everybody is doing, part of what this video call here is doing is, you know, wanting to have conversations over video. You have a room where you're trying to have a conversation with a lot of people and, and attendees and, and other things with a, a lot going on in the room. So it's not just a typical meeting room with two or three people around a table. So we're recommending a, a PTZ camera, which is, again, an acronym for pan tilt zoom. So the camera has the ability to move up and down, left and right, and has a 12x optical zoom, should you want to zoom in on something in particular, which would be wall mounted on with the view of the dais and podium, which are kind of in front of each other, according to the pictures I've seen. So the camera does require an outlet to be nearby. So that's why I thought it can also be powered over PoE, which is over CAT 5 and Ethernet, which is just an alternative method. But I think there was power in the general vicinity already from our discussion with Elaine. But the last piece of it is the, the rack that you have, again, down the hallway. There's no need to, you know, get rid of, uh, equipment that, that is productive in the, in the upgrade. So some things like the amplifier would stay, the rack itself would cha, uh, stay. Any equipment that we decommission or remove from the system is your equipment. We would essentially just disconnect it and provide it back to you for recycling, reuse, whatever your purposes may be going forward. And the, um, sorry for my big hand there. I don't know if you can see over my shoulder here, um, above the display behind me. That's, that's, that's a pan tilt zoom camera. It's not, uh, I can also share my screen and show you one here when I get out of this PDF. But essentially, you're gonna have a camera that moves around the room and you can give it a couple of determined presets. So that you have a couple of, you know, you don't want to turn this into a, a movie studio, but there are probably some very common areas like the podium, like an expanded view of the dais. So where you would put those on some like presets. So these have it at the bottom remote I'm showing you now or would be present on the remote. Teams and Zoom also interact with the camera. We recommend it, it's certified with those two, uh, fridge services. So it will act and, and be seen as a peripheral within those types of services so that you can manipulate it actually within the Zoom software as well. So in a nutshell, that's our scope of work. So that's the things we intended to change. I'm scrolling through some, uh, through some things like our assumptions and then other things, which are things like we don't provide power. We're not electricians. So I, I do invite you all to look at those, but I, I won't put you to sleep going through, you know, one by one here. So in regards to the scope of work, unless there's any questions, I'll move on over to what, you know, we would describe as the, the BOM, the bill of materials. You know, what equipment we would be introducing to achieve that scope of work we just discussed.
Okay.
Just keep moving? Okay, great. This is the, uh, two microphones that we were going to add. And we did look to match what's existing there, that Audix brand. Some microphone cable to get those wired up. This is the amplifier that we would utilize if needed. If your amplifier onsite caused any issues, we would have a backup. Otherwise, you wouldn't see this on your bill. It's just nice to come with a backup if you think there might be an issue. Of course, if somebody could confirm those speakers work, that would tell us the amplifier works as well too. So that's only there if we need. I'm just think it's one of the things we just wanted to have a safety net for. This is a DSP that I mentioned, the, the digital signal processor. And this is why you come to an AV integrator, because you wouldn't be able to buy products like Byam and, uh, this particular brand, Byam, in your case, because you don't have a lot of control in your solution. But you, you have to have a dealer that sells enough of the product, has sales certification and engineering certification so that when they sell it, we sell it, we have support from Byam, because this is not a, a plug and play product. You put it in a room, it pings itself, it does some learning of the room, because all rooms are different with ceiling heights and room and carpet versus tile, the various factors that make up ambient room noise. So this is a very intelligent piece of equipment. You can't really buy off the shelf. And it does take an integrator to be able to provide it to you. So I would say of all the things you're buying, if I'm sitting there from a non-technical point of view, I think most of you give what microphones and cameras do. This is really the device that is going to introduce better audio quality for you so that when you have microphones in a room with speakers pointing downward on them, you can help eliminate feedback. And because the signal is digital, you can filter, kind of scrub it, if you will. And then it has all these algorithms that the, the manufacturers built in to help it do the audio echo cancellation so that you have a very smooth call as a result of things. And there are various forms of DSPs out there in the world. Cause I see things like the OW and some of these other things that I bumped into today. And they have a very canned version of a DSP, but it's not the kind of DSP where you could hook a computer up to it, get in the program with it and really massage it for a given situation. So I would say of all the components you're being introduced to, that's probably the most technical one that I think is gonna offer the most advantage going forward, short of some of the things you're doing just to make your user experience better. This is a look at the AvrCam camera that we planned, uh, that we proposed. It's a, uh, the 12X full HD pan tilt zoom. Ultimately, it is USB, um, so it connects to the system via USB. And, uh, this is, uh, the extender type cable you need to run the link. Cause a USB is, you have to strengthen the signal a little bit after like 15 feet. It's, I'm not the engineer, but that's why you put a little better US cable in there for, for longer length. So at the rack, we're not, again, planning on a lot of equipment. We've got some cables, some things to do our connection of components, if you will, and a small switch that we installed to have our equipment talk to on a small little network that we introduced for our purposes. And you can see some of these running totals that's breaking along. We're getting now into the services side of things. So at this point, we've engineered a project. If we sell it, there would be programming involved, mainly with that Byam product that I went on and on about earlier, the DSP. But that really is the piece of equipment that is not off the shelf. You sort of need the dealer relationship to procure it and install it properly and have the manufacturer's support. So that, I think, is why you're probably moving up from buying components into more of a little integrated type of solution that you, that you have here today. And then when things are sold and off the ground, ultimately, if a process was, this project was approved, our process, this would be submitted to the administrative staff. A PM local to your area would be assigned. And then the, um, field technicians in the immediate area would be assigned to come and do the project. And, um, we have a one year on the equipment and a three year on the, excuse me, three month on the labor install. So that's, uh, anything beyond that, you would call our service department and, uh, just request service on your account number and things. So, um, I, I don't come and necessarily do the work. It would graduate into admin and, and sort of navigate towards the local resources to execute the project, some of which is project management. So that's why you see that being accounted for. So in the grand scheme of things, the, those segmented, uh, subtotals came up to that 6469 in equipment. And the labor for us to be involved, uh, install, program, commission the system, train you on it, um, would be 3692 and some change. So that's the budget to complete your project, short of taxes, which you may not pay as a municipality. But that's what it takes to get that scope of work and that bill of materials installed. So that's what we were asked to sort of respond to with Elaine. And that's, I guess, how I got to this conversation today so that, you know, we could present this proposal to you and see, see if, if that made sense to you as far as what you were trying to accomplish.
All right, thank you. Anybody have any questions?
So when you talk about your local rep or in the area of service people, I mean, is that somebody in Chattanooga or is that somebody in East Tennessee?
I wouldn't be able to answer that. Uh, I don't work in operations. So the, the way the, the company I work for does work from one coast to the other in the United States. So you could really be in any zip code and we would just steer it to Florida or New York. The reason we're talking is the engineer and myself that were working on this, this is a corporate AV conferencing type of opportunity with cameras and microphones. So they don't have me and him in every state. So you start the conversation from design and engineering with us and then you navigate to the local resources. And, um, it would be either our technicians or subcontractors, depending on what our bandwidth is at the time or what your particular project requires. Some projects require outside programmers. I don't necessarily think yours do. We do Byam programming and, and house and everything, so... But some of these projects can get very complex with engineering and, uh, different programming resources and things like that. So it will navigate to people more in your area. I wouldn't know exactly where the technicians reside because I don't, I don't operate on that side of the business. But you would navigate to somebody who's in your area that could respond to an install and service.
Okay, thank you.
Do you know how much the amplifier would be less if we don't need to replace, replace it?
I could probably answer that if you give me a minute. I'll share my screen so I can go look at some of the documents. And I can multitask, so if you've got a...
So I got, yeah, I do have other questions.
Yeah, if you got a follow-up, I'm just hunting for documents, so...
So the cancellation technology, I guess, in this room, this room's pretty oddly shaped and has a lot of like natural echo and things like that.
You can hear some of it, yeah.
Yeah. So I guess if we use that digital, digital cancellation technology, is it going to help to...
Absolutely, 100%.
Take from the microphone and then for, not just for the digital recording or streaming, but also for, um, folks in the audience?
Uh, I can say with confidence, uh, a couple of things. Number one, our equipment will do, uh, an immense improvement over just analog equipment placed around a room, looking for different results with different people sitting. As I understand, you had some microphone gaps, hence the two that we introduced at the, at the table there. So, um, the getting away from analog and getting it into a digital format is what really helps us sort of manipulate that echo. Cause it can be identified, like if you looked on a little scale, you know, little, we all got stereos at home back in the day where they, we didn't have Bluetooth speakers everywhere. If you can remember the olden days, it, it had the ability to isolate that kind of and then filter it out. And that's why it's very important that the mics and the speakers and all that be a part of the same system so that they can be massaged in that way. It's like if we had one today where they just kind of taken this device, it was, you know, it was a 360 device and stuck it in a 30 by 30 conference room. And it's like, you know, it was in too large a room. It's not a configurable device. You had had a DSP in it, but it really just did what it did. It didn't have the ability for us to program it, configure it, massage it for a given space. So yes, that's why you buy a DSP is because one room is very different from the next just in setup and materials and walls and all of those kinds of things. So you're gonna get a good improvement on that. And anything that it, this can improve, you guys would need to seek like acousticians, people who actually put padding, uh, different things on the walls to control the reflect, reflective nature of sound. So no, no, I'll be clear, no audio system can fix all of that. But I don't think that in your building that it's so bad. You just don't have much ability to control it once you've collected it. So yeah, you got microphones and you're collecting it, but you really don't have an ability to really scrub it. You don't have engineers sitting at a board, dealing with people that talk at a microphone at varying distances and that kind of stuff. So I, I can say with confidence, it's gonna get a lot better from that standpoint. Anything that didn't clean up would be addressed more towards things you would do in the room relative to acoustics.
How, how often do you see that with your clients?
Rarely, you know? It's things where they built an HVAC system in a new construction project and they put the HVAC in a training room that we were working on and didn't know about it. So if you've got an HVAC system hiding in your ceiling that I'm not aware of, I'm not gonna be able to overcome what I would describe as a high ambient noise. But for typical ambient noise, that's what the DSP is designed to do at an integrated level.
And then how push-button would this solution be for like our average citizen board member to kind of come in and get started streaming a meeting?
Essentially, it's a lot, gonna be a lot like you're doing now because everything was driven by that table, uh, I guess, over to your right, where you sat. So it's all Windows-driven, if you get me where I'm saying there. So everything you're doing is coming from a Windows device. So if the user is comfortable with driving what I would call BYOD, bring your own device, uh, which is very common in, in a meeting situation. You either dedicate a room PC and people come and interact with that or you're bringing your laptop and I'm slapping in the USB and that allows me to connect to the USB mics and camera and basically marry up my laptop to fixed equipment in the room. And then when I unplug it, it goes back to what it was doing. So I, I would say that experience is not gonna change much at all. And if users were comfortable with Windows before, that's about what the prerequisite would be now. Cause we're still using that recorder on the table as well for, to get that audio back to recording and then live streaming. So not a lot's changing with that too much. I mean, maybe some learning curve training and stuff, but the, the gist of what you were doing is still sourced via Windows.
Any other questions? Okay, you were looking for the amp cost.
Oh, thank you. Yeah. I remember him, it's in my notes, cause Elaine asked it. I think it's around a thousand dollars. So if by some reason we didn't need that, you can expect a reduction. And I can follow up with Elaine with the, a specific email. I, I debated about having an engineer on the call, but I, I had a feeling this was just more proposal scope, so I didn't bring him in for technical. And I don't actually have his itemized internal on this, so I can't go to that data and look at it. But I, from other experiences, and I can follow up with an exact number, but I'm gonna say about a thousand bucks, give or take.
Okay.
Still writing a little bit of a check, but it'd be nice to save some money at the same time.
Yeah. All right. Thank you for your time.
No problem.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, y'all, y'all have a good evening.
Thanks. End meeting, Paul? Thank you, Jennifer. Do we have to do the same thing? Well, I'll let somebody sit this time since I sat the whole time. Yeah, for you guys, it's gonna cost a lot more. The training's gonna go up, way up.
I wonder if it would be better to, for us to go around front so that at least the speakers are pointed out in case anybody's trying to hear us? speakers are pointed out in case anybody's trying to hear us.
Yeah, we could do that.
Sure.
And then if there's something, I don't know what this, this is on the website.
Or just like stand around the...
Yes.
Proud City.
So I mean, our citizens may want to see the screen as well, is what I'm saying. So I think maybe if we can work our way down there instead of being up here.
Yeah.
Something next to Proud City, Proud City, yeah. This is...
Where do you think the microphone is?
Nothing.
Huh? Did you get the...
This is a website demonstration.
Oh, this is... So we have two, about two, and about one.
Oh, I have two, so maybe...
What about right here?
I was still going to run here on the screen.
Here. Okay.
He should be on in the next couple of minutes. I think the scheduled time is 7:15-ish, so.
And this is...
Proud City.
Proud City.
What was revised, maybe?
Same thing, website.
Yeah.
They're really individual meetings.
Yeah.
I'm meeting on Wednesday, and I'm having a meeting.
Just going to talk.
Get sinister.
I figure they have huge council.
Yeah.
They're going to be like, they really need some technology.
Apparently there's...
Yeah.
Apparently there's another projector that's newer that...
They used a projector.
The communication didn't get to me and Rick, who were trying to set everything up, so we didn't know that there was another projector that might have worked better.
If it would work, if it was working just now, we'll be able to have the conversation and that's what...
Yep.
This is all the things they left me to target.
Make sure I was on the right.
Yeah.
He should be on in the next couple of minutes. I think the scheduled time is 7:15-ish, so.
And this is...
Proud City. Proud City.
What was revised, maybe?
Same thing, website.
Yeah.
They're really individual meetings.
Yeah.
I'm meeting on Wednesday, and I'm having a meeting.
Just going to talk.
Get sinister.
I figure they have huge council.
Yeah.
They're going to be like, they really need some technology.
No, apparently there's...
Yeah. I just...
Apparently there's another projector that's newer that...
They used a projector.
The communication didn't get to me and Rick, who were trying to set everything up, so we didn't know that there was another projector that might have worked better.
If it would work, if it was working just now, we'll be able to have the conversation and that's what...
Yep.
This is all the things they left me to target.
Make sure I was on the right.
Yeah.
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 And so by taking a product approach, what that means is kind of similar to an app or a social network is that it's continuously improving over time. So as expectations and laws, feedback, things change, the product is changing along with it. So things are continuously improving. And that means that we're holding ourselves to the same standards that Signal Mountain is held to by your community. So your community provides feedback and lets people know, like in council meetings, when things should be better, when the expectation has changed, that services need to improve or a pothole needs to be filled. And so we get feedback from our governments across the country, which is our feedback mechanism, and then everyone benefits from that. So every two weeks, we're putting out updates. So that continuous improvement is that big cities, small cities, that are saying, hey, can this be better? Or we have this idea, what do you think about it? Are all pooling together to make sure that governments are elevating each other. So again, it's not this fixed asset that is pay to play. The latest launch has all the tools. Everything's improving together, which is our approach that no one else is doing. So that's worth flagging, since it's completely different. So what that means is that we're able to be much more affordable and faster than other providers. So when we get things started, we could kind of kick off, we don't have to start from scratch. So the demo that we're going to go through today, I'm going to flag some features and aspects of kind of where we're starting from. This does not mean this is where we end. This is just means that we don't have to reinvent the wheel and spend a lot of time and money on things that we know that you need. So we'll start here and we'll start building and customizing based on the needs that you have and communicate to us. But all of this is subject to change. So colors, font, menu items, element on the page, all of this is going to change as part of the experience and working together. And just to kind of show you how it can go in lots of different directions, is, you know, here's a city that's almost 400,000 people. So they've really built it out into a large tool for their community. Or you could go in a completely different direction, like Petaluma did, but all starting from the same point. So I just kind of wanted to flag that this is not a, unless this is exactly what you want, which is totally cool and a lot of people go that route, this is a very flexible platform for local governments. Things that are standard for us is that everything that we do has to be a healthy government website, which we define by being secure. So everything has to have an SSL security kit, always has, and we have a charge for it. So that's standard for us. Everything's going through security protocols. Everything needs to be responsive. So that means that the site adjusts depending on the browser and what you're viewing it on. So whether it's a desktop, a tablet, or a phone, and everything in between. I'm sure everyone in the room has a different size phone and computer and other devices. You have one thing that works for everyone. So you don't need an app, you don't need a desktop version, you have one thing that just works. And then thirdly is accessibility. So we're going to be at or above AA accessibility standards. Our model of continuous improvement that all of our governments get with our subscription goes hand in hand to the realities of accessibility. Whether we're talking about accessibility for the web or buildings, the goalposts are constantly moving, which is a good thing. But we need to be prepared for the fact that things change. So the fact that we're putting out updates and changes to standards every two weeks means that you're not spending a bunch of money or that you're kind of left in the cold because compliance changes. We're a government provider. We need to make sure that our websites and our product is accessible, and that's something that we take seriously. And just the way that we do business is an honest approach to maintaining those standards. So everything's going to go through those three criteria in everything that we do. We're going to take a customer service approach. So we want to make sure that people are able to find information quickly so that they could get on with their day. So if they are, we have a nice clear menu structure so that people can click through and understand where they are on the site in a logical manner regardless of the device that they're on, is something that we're going to pay attention to early on. The other thing that is going to make sure people can find information quickly and, again, get on with their day, is that our site searches is better than everyone else. So our predictive search is going to be kind of like that Google experience. So if someone's looking for, say, a police report, that predictive answers come up that are coming out of the website that they're searching for. So this is going to, in this case, is, you know, how do I get a copy of a police report? How do I file a police report? This is important because someone who does the search terms for a police report, these are two completely different transactions. So to provide quick options that people could find what they're actually looking for allows people to go through content that, competing content that is inevitable of a government website. So getting people the information that they're looking for in the terms in which they are familiar with. And then we are now, we're going to have these interactive FAQs again so that people can find the information that they're looking for in other ways as well. Payments and report an issue with our secure and responsive web forms. We are going to use icons quite a bit, again, accessible, responsive, so that you can be continuously improving your site as well. So high level, that's kind of where our starting point is. For the administrators of the site, for the city, this is critical in that we're going to put you through an experience-based training so that they can understand the backend system that is, again, geared for local governments. So the content types, the templates that are in the backend here are things that you need to manage local government. So it's not just news and pages, although we include that, it is departments and documents, payments, web forms, and all the different aspects that are needed to be able to easily manage the day-to-day of a government website. Now continuing on here, keeping my eye on the clock, if we are creating a page, just to give you a sense of how easy things are, you know, creating a page for the demo is as easy as writing an email and dropping it directly into, say, the menu structure. So again, you're continuing with a clear and concise information architecture and that you have a clear URL path and that our search engine optimization, so if people are looking for information for your community, that they are finding it easily. You know, this is important for, even though you are a small in population, you are near areas that are much larger. So to have stronger search engine optimization will help people find information for you. And this is something that we also do really well. So this is our first editor. This is just kind of basic stuff for creating a page. Now, moving along into, back to the homepage where we have our hero unit, so this is a big image here. We have some icons, our service center that we talked about with the get answers, payments, report an issue, and then departments displayed by icon, news feed, and an event feed. On this page, we're using our second editor. This is what we call page builder. And this is where continuous improvement really shows up. So, you know, being able to add content to your website, that's standard now. But being able to design and continuously improve your services on your own without needing to know code is our standard and what we'll train you on. So when we're looking at this homepage now, you'll see that it's broken out by widgets. So this, again, this is our second editor that folks will be trained on, that has your hero unit, it has icons, it has your service center, departments, a news feed, and an event feed. So when things inevitably change, they will, you're not stuck with the homepage that you designed at this time. You know, if for some reason you want the news feed to be at the top of the page, you could just drag it up there. If you want that news feed to have five items instead of three, if you want to change the display styles, you can do it just by making adjustments within this editor. And not only do you have these options within here, but you have a whole toolbox of responsive, accessible, and secure widgets that we're continuously adding to. So we're not just kind of keeping things up to date, but again, with these updates that we're pushing every two weeks, we're actually giving you new features. So we're increasing the toolbox that you have over time. So everyone is continuously improving together. And so this toolset here allows you to look at other cities for inspiration, and it's not like a scope order where you're like, how much will it cost for me to have that? These are all the same tools. Whether you are a massive city with a huge budget or a smaller community that's trying to make it work, you have the same tools. And so you can look to other Proud City customers and say, oh, it's this widget and that widget, and I could do that as well. So all of this is accessible to your community regardless of your budget. So that is very high-level, quick overview of what we're about from service design, who we are as a company, but what life on the platform would be, again, very high level. As promised, I'm actually ahead of schedule. I could open it up for any questions, and if there's any specifics on features or how to do something or goals that you are trying to achieve, I'm happy to use this test site as an opportunity to kind of walk through it. So any questions? I don't know if you guys have a way of kind of organizing or if you just want to start shouting at me, I'll trust your process.
I'll moderate. You can't see me, but if anybody wants to ask questions.
You can say anything.
No, it's fine. I mean, I'm just, tell me, I'll remember, but if somebody wants to, if you guys have a question.
So when you go back to, like, the screen that had all of the different options when planning a page?
Mm-hmm.
I couldn't see it really, but...
The one that was widget-based?
Yeah, the widgets.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. Yeah. Sorry, now you're going to, like, look up my nose here.
Yeah, so, and this is a long list of things that are all specific for local governments. So if you want to put a list of public meetings, or icons, or a list of departments, things of that nature, that these are different widgets that can be added.
So one thing that I would really like our website to do is to be able to hold a document library of important documents that we see as counsel, but to give citizens maybe an opportunity to not have to fill out an open record request and have it right there, what kind of services do you supply to do a document library?
Sure. There's a couple of different ways that document, you mentioned, so here's one way of doing documents. So documents in, for us, is a specific content type that takes a, what is commonly, a PDF and embed it into the page to meet our standards. So PDFs typically aren't accessible or responsive. So by embedding it in our platform, it is secure and it is responsive, and it is more accessible than other options. So the document library that you mentioned is that when you create a document, you have a tag, and so then you can have filtered results to search any document that's on the site. You can also, sorry, go ahead?
No, please continue.
This also allows you to post one document that is distributed to multiple areas of the website. So say you have a FOIA request form, and you want that to live in multiple sections of the website. You don't have to have a PDF that you put in five different places, and then one of, when your form changes, you have to remember those five places. You have one form that you update and it distributes to all the areas that that form should be. So that is the documents content type. But you asked a question about requests and submitting forms. So this is PDFs, this is kind of the old-school way. Web forms is something that you can tie to a document like that, but if you want the ability, and this is standard, but report an issue is a version of a web form. But you could customize as many web forms as you want that go directly on the site. So if this is a FOIA request or a permit or anything that is currently a PDF that you want to get out of being a PDF and be something that can be submitted right away, you can create these.
So a form like this, would it then be emailed to the person who would answer? Like, I think you clicked on potholes, so that would go to Public Works.
Yeah, certainly.
Is that going to be linked directly into somebody's email so that, like, there won't be the need to filter through all these different requests if we put 10 of these forms up?
Exactly. So each individual form can be routed to a specific or a group of emails. So this pothole form can go to one person, it could go to 10 people, it could go to a group email. You could set it up on a case-by-case basis however you want.
Okay, and if I can just jump back to the document library a little bit? So I don't know how familiar you are with our website currently, but like, we have the list of every single set of minutes and resolutions and ordinances and any other possible document in one giant list? Yeah, there you found it. How is that going to be stored on a new website? Because the way it's stored now is ridiculous.
So there's a couple of different ways. I'm just trying to see if there's like...
Keep scrolling. There you go. Keep going, keep going!
Yeah, you know, I think it would be a, just to be totally honest, I think a discussion needs to happen on how far back you want to go on some of this, on being on the website. You know, some of it might fall into, oftentimes when you have an older site like this, things are just added over time, over time, over time, and so you have it from the very beginning. So there could be a discussion about, okay, at what point is the cutoff for what is on the website and what is FOIA request or upon request? And making that easy so that you don't have to have all this, everything up there, but is still very accessible and people know when it is a requested item or when it's just sitting there. But our document list, as I mentioned with the categories, allows you to have this master document list, but then under each department or page or however you structure this, that you can have dedicated pages by those categories. So if you want to have documents that are just for administration, that should just be under the administration department so that people could find that a little bit more logically, it could live here. So it doesn't, you can have your big, all documents go to one place, but you can also have pages that are a little bit more focused, not by creating more content, just by kind of distributing what you already have in a way that people can get to easier. So there's ways of doing that for, you know, we'll want to take a look at, you know, this archive and, you know, part of building out the architecture, we'll consider, you know, these items and what's, what are priorities, what do people need to access faster, what is dated? You know, it's a good time to look at things and determine if it's accurate.
Well, I mean, like, our citizens, our citizens use all those documents, they're just very hard to find, and that sort of thing. I'm just wondering if there's like an indexable library where all those documents will be in place, but you would click for resolutions and then, you know, like, resolution by year or that sort of thing. But I'm done with questions and other people can...
I think, so how do you transfer these documents over? Like, just, if you just manually transfer each one over and put a label on it?
Yeah, so part of our process is, in training you, this is what we call experience-based training, we'll train you on how to set these up and create your feeds, and part of that is then creating the list that makes sense for you. Part of that is the repetition of adding documents that you want to bring over. So a bunch of these, yeah, will need to happen in a manual approach, which I then think people then have conversations of what is in fact an important document to bring over. I know that governments are held to standards because all of our customers are governments, that you have to have file retention. But that doesn't mean that, you know, every single file, you know, ever created is living on the website. I think having, say, 10 years' worth is a healthy amount that's not going to kind of bog down performance and then is actually being used. Whereas things that are beyond that, if you have a clear file management, that are still accessible. Just want to have the ones that are most frequented to be easy to access.
Okay. Any more?
That helps.
What's an example in the last three months of a new feature that you implemented from customer feedback?
Yeah, um, it's a little bit hard to show up here. We've been really focused on performance, so site speed, with sites being, I'll just show you. So what I'm going into now is the my.proudcitydashboard, this is where you log into to get to your site. And then this is a, let's see, these folks launched last week, and they needed to launch very quickly, so it's very much a work in progress. But they, as you can see here, their mobile traffic is 57%, which is pretty common nowadays. So site performance is really important. Now, what I'll share with you is that part of what we've added into their performance is the ability to clear out site cache. So what that means is that we are storing data every time the page loads so that administrators can kind of speed things up if there's been a lot of updates, that they could click a button and clear out site cache to make things faster. So tools that are typically on the developer end or more sophisticated, we've added that and clicked the button. And that was based on some more kind of technical-minded customers asking for access to something like that, and then us realizing, you know what, everyone would benefit from this, let's open it up so that everyone could benefit from a faster site. So that was a more recent add-on.
How does kind of like administration of users work and how do, like, do they submit edits that have to get approved? How does, is there a process for that?
Yeah, let me go into not a customer. So you'll manage your own users. This will be part of your training. So you can invite as many admins as you want. And there are three different levels of permissions, author, editor, and admin. Frankly, especially for communities your size, just across the board, pretty much everyone is an editor and above. Admins have access to everything. Editors can do almost everything, but they can't manage users. And then authors can create content but need editors or admins for it to be published. So we don't get overly granular with permissions and access. As far as like placement on the site, people ask all the time about like certain departments only being able to access their departments and roles that if someone has a certain role within a department, that you want to split things off. And the reason why we don't do that is that if you want people to be collaborating and working with each other, if someone has completely different access to different sections for a small city, even though your, the content might be different, you're solving similar problems and you're using the same tools, by siloing people off by permission levels, it's going to be harder for people to work together. So if someone seems like they're going to not play by the rules and edit content that they should not be editing, then they should have approval in order for things to be published. Otherwise, it's, people are able to work together to update information across the site, and then the highest level gives access to managing, you know, who's a user and who isn't.
Okay. And so you mentioned training a good bit. I guess, in initial implementation, where's y'all's role in and kind of ours begin as far as getting a site up and running?
Yeah, so our onboarding is totally different. Rather than throwing training in at the end of the process and just kind of showing you, this is how you post a page and good luck, we put training at the beginning of the process. We launch our sites within 90 days regardless of how big or small the community is, is because they all run through our 12-week curriculum. And so starting at the beginning, we're going to be doing trainings. Each week is a focus area on a content type, a feature or a service delivery, and we're just going to focus on that thing. And we're going to give you homework assignments. And part of the homework assignment is so that you learn by doing. So that at the end of the 12 weeks, you've gone through this curriculum that builds upon each week, and you have a full understanding of, you know, how to do this stuff on your own. So if you look at, say, sprint three or week three, you can see that this is focused on creating departments and sub-pages and getting an intro into page builder, and then within this, you are learning how to create a document list and best practices on compressing PDFs and kind of these focused tutorials on how to do this stuff in a modern way. And by doing it in this sequential focused manner, like I said, not only are you launching a site faster, but you're learning by doing. And I think everyone, you know, has gone through some sort of training experience that was much more fulfilling and productive when they had to actually get their hands in there. So that is the model to our program, and, you know, it's 12 weeks. Most communities get in there and they launch faster than 12 weeks. So you can have your site much earlier than 90 days.
How, how far back do most communities go in terms of historical documents? How many years? What's average?
You know, it's state by state based on law, on kind of open record laws. California, which is pretty conservative as far as the Brown Act and record retention, I believe is five years. There aren't really folks that require more than that, but standards and needs may very much be beyond five years. So if you want to go beyond that, that's entirely up to you. But I think it's healthy, whether it's documents or any other content, to just pause and determine, you know, the purpose and the need to have... you know, the purpose and the need to have all the content and data that's on the site there. Now, I, I compare it to moving, you know? If you're, you're moving into a new house and you have a attic full of stuff, are you just going to stuff it into the new attic or are you going to take the opportunity to see what sort of goodies you have and what, what's scary and should never be seen by anyone? So it, it, I really do see it not just as a daunting thing, but as an opportunity to kind of clean house.
All right.
Great.
Anybody have any other questions?
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Give the presentation.
Thank you.
Sure, and, uh, just in, in, in closing, I really appreciate the time. I know it's late. If anyone has follow-up questions or if things come up afterwards, uh, my email's kevin@proudcity, proudcity.com. And feel free to send me a message. I'm happy to answer, uh, anything that wasn't covered in this brief discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, hi.
Bye-bye.
All right.
Thank you all for being so flexible. Why don't I suggest that we take a little field trip?
Yeah, no problem. Okay, um, let's, uh, speed on through. We have the manager's report.
No manager's report tonight.
Okay. We got a good update on Friday from Elaine, so that helps. Uh, other business communications and reports from the mayor and council.
Just real quick, um, given the, what was discussed by Mr. Graham and Mr. Case, I'm wondering maybe if the police department or the town can't maybe do a mini education series on Facebook about safety running when it's getting darker out and, you know, that sort of thing. Just to kind of bring it back up to the front of people's minds.
We, we don't want to get high on that data list of accidents. I still volunteer my like pinky toes if somebody wants to get the accidents up there so we can get some grants. I'll stick my foot in the road.
Okay.
We shall be known.
Yeah, I don't, I don't understand why people are out in dark without any reflective clothing and lights and stuff. I mean...
I think it's, I think some of it's just, people forget, right? This happened a year ago. It didn't happen, like, getting dark early happened a year ago. Last week they went out jogging at eight o'clock at night and they were fine. They're just forgetful.
Yeah, no, that's true. Sometimes...
The more light and lights up and the more strobe light you put on, the safer they are.
Yep.
Yeah, well, I think it's a good idea if, if you guys have, you know, some ideas where you can put some information out for the public.
They need to borrow from the 5:00 AM crowd this morning. I went by, I think, three people who were walking with strobe light on the front and the back of their head.
We have a light-up collar for our dog, so people love that. It's awesome. Okay, uh, any other items there? Uh, reports from, uh, depart, and let's put on the agenda to talk about the speed limits. I mean, I, I'm not sure anybody necessarily wants to change them, but at least we can talk about them and see, you know, how we feel about that. Well, I was going to say next at our work session, but if you want to tell us some information, that's fine.
We pretty much, I'm going to keep you posted on the studies we've done over there on James. And it just doesn't happen with 50 miles an hour, even 45. The, out of the 500 and something we clocked the last time, the highest one was 41. Uh, and it looks faster. I'll give you that. It looks faster, but it's just not. So, and he and I have talked several times. You know, we have good conversations about it and we agree to disagree and, uh, we keep putting the, the speed sign over there. And we, it's time to move it again because we can't leave it in that one place because we probably have eight or 10 at the same time. I know you get them too. Would you put the speed sign in our neighborhood, so?
Is there the potential maybe, and I don't know if this sort of thing actually affects behavior, but there, on the one part of James, as you're heading up towards the library from the back, there is that, I think, solar-powered permanent speed sign. Would that be something that we could look into potentially putting closer to where maybe these issues are?
Uh, something that we'll be bringing to you very soon. Now, I'm glad you brought that up. We've, uh, applied for our THSO grant. And this year we applied for two, uh, of those very same radar-controlled lights for the school zones. One for Nolan, uh, and one for Thrasher. That it's radar-controlled and it gives you your speed and blinking lights. So we're going to ask you to approve that grant here very soon, once we get, get it filed. There's a little bit of, uh, I think like $4,000 difference, but, uh, Elaine and I have been working on, she's found where she can use that money. And it'd be $35,000 worth of school lights that we get for basically four. So we'll be bringing that to you very soon.
Yeah, I think those, uh, those signs that tell you how fast you're going are, are helpful. Because sometimes you don't even realize it and you see this thing flash and all of a sudden you say, oh my god.
That's 90% of the time we stop people over here, they don't have, they don't realize they're going as fast as they are. And they're super apologetic and sometimes they still get it to you, sometimes you just get a warning, uh, depending on the, how egregious it was in their driving record. But I, I think it is a deterrent when they actually see their speed real-time with the radar. Because we can't be there all the time. So we can definitely, uh, I think that'll work in those school zones.
All right, awesome. Um, yeah, I forgot we were at the part of where, where we had reports from the department heads. It's getting late and we got, uh, the, the, the written reports. I don't, do y'all want to have the, everybody do a report?
We suspend that.
Yeah.
It's been a long meeting and we don't want to keep everybody here, uh, so we... I, I appreciate the reports. I think, I think it's, it's a great read from all of you and I, I do appreciate you guys putting those together. I know it's time-consuming, so thanks for taking the time to do it. Yeah. Uh, so we'll move on to the reports from committees or boards. You got a report?
Yeah, so I, I think I sent to all of y'all the minutes from the Parks Board meeting. Really great meeting. They discussed the, uh, survey, but, but also passed to official recommendations. And I guess, well, one, we need to kind of respond and deal with those. And, um, the first of which is, uh, a recommendation to, um, I guess recommend that we, um, keep a, a mulch ring around our, our trees on town property. Purpose being, one, reduce maintenance costs or, yeah, of, of having to rake the leaves. It's actually, and two, it keeps the trees way healthier and maybe we don't have to cut as many down, uh, which is an expense that we've seen some pretty decent invoices on.
I have a thought about that. We have a tree board and I, at one point in time, the tree board was talking about raking the leaves or keeping the leaves instead of like raking them out of your yard and, you know, like putting them around places. So I think the tree board could maybe collaborate a little bit with the Parks Board about that kind of thing.
Well, I, I will say that, um, the original suggestion came from a citizen on the t- tree board who emailed the Parks Board to consider it. In fact, I think both of these came from that. So I think it's in collaboration with the tree board, yeah. And yeah, absolutely. It's like, my, my tree guy who's a horrible tree guy because he tells you what, he convinces you not to cut down trees. I'm like, you're terrible at what you, what you do. But that's why I, I like him because he's more about, he's always like, you've got to keep that. He's told me that same thing years ago, is got to keep that ring of, of good tree food is what he calls it. And by, you know, getting all the leaves out of the way, one, it's more work for Jared's team. Two, you end up with, um, erosion issues like over here on the hillside and over there. It's hard to keep grass or anything. Uh, and then three, you're keeping the trees healthier, hopefully avoiding some, uh, big bills to cut down eight trees like we had over here, um, a couple of years ago. As far as like what we should do, I think maybe it's just general direction and maybe consensus. I don't, I don't know that we need a real resolution to kind of say, yeah, council agrees with that. Unless y'all think we need to take another route for that.
No, I mean, I think just, I mean, like, for, if there's consensus, I would think it would just go into standard operating procedure.
Yeah, for, for Elaine to implement something.
Yeah, which is operational. But I think it's a great idea. I don't know. Like, thinking about the resolutions and ordinance as recording trees. I mean, there could possibly be something added to it, but I'm not sure if it's necessary.
Sounds purely operational to me.
That's kind of what I think too, so. I mean, I support that. I don't know if we all want to go down the line and say yes or no.
I support it.
Yes, I support it.
Yeah, it's a great idea.
Okay, so there we go. There's consensus.
All right, and so the second item was, which may require maybe a little bit more official, um, items is the, uh, recommendation to, um, designate that all new plantings on town property be, uh, native species.
I was so excited when I read this in, in the minutes that you said. There's actually two municipalities in Hamilton County right now that are looking at a native plant ordinance. And I was thinking like, how do I bring this up, but Parks Board did, so I'm good. I would be happy to try to get a copy of what they're working on. None of them have passed them yet. They're still in the works and bring them to the next work session.
Awesome. Yeah, again, another effort and really great research and work from the Parks Board that native species are typically going to be a lot less maintenance for Jared and his team. In addition to kind of more environmentally friendly to our region.
Okay, thank you.
That's great. I love that email.
Yeah, well, that's, that's all, uh, that's all the Parks Board.
That's a good board.
Fantastic. One of the best I've heard.
Any other board committees? We can, one of us can speak about the Planning Commission. We had, yeah, we have a, um, there was a request by Lois Kilabru, who's got a, um, an office over there across from CVS to build a second level and put a, yeah, to have a condominium for her to live in. Somebody needs to talk to her about a little work-life balance maybe, but, you know, she wants to live where she works. That's fine. But, uh, there were questions about whether, uh, if she was to get, she was asking to be rezoned, whether that was spot zoning, whether she could ask a neighbor to join in with her and whether that's still spot zoning. And also whether if she was able to get rezoned and to get a building permit to change the structure, is, could she meet the new setback requirements and would she have to go back to the, the Board of Zoning Appeals first to find out? Because her property is right on the edge. I mean, sorry, the building goes right to the edge of the property. She must be grandfathered in, obviously. She doesn't have enough parking spaces for what she has. So, um, I think that if she were to get a rezoning and do a building permit, she would have to meet the new, um, requirements and lose her grandfather status. So, uh, anyway, it was tabled so that more information could be gotten on all those subjects, yeah.
And that's been interesting. I, I wondered about that after reading that that was coming up. Because I pass the property six, eight times a day. And there's no shoulder there on the road because of her parking, because she parks on the shoulder. And I know on-street parking is allowed in town, but like she actually has painted parking spots on the town right-of-way, um, and the shoulder of the road. Is that allowable?
Depends on how long it's been there.
Well, the, this, the painting, um, about three weeks?
Oh, she painted that recently?
No, not, not, not that, but like, the painting on the shoulder there for the parking spots, less than six months.
Oh, I thought it'd been there for years. But I don't know, I just...
Did it fade and then we...
I mean, I never remembered seeing it and, I mean, like even, like a year, year and a half ago, people would pull in this, like, parallel and now they're going horizontal in. So I don't know.
They've always parked there, but I don't recall the striping being there either.
Your department didn't, didn't paint it? So she must have just done it herself, I guess?
When they repaved it, when they did Balance, so when Balance Studios redid their building, which looks fantastic, they repaved that side and when they did that side is when they, like, that business repaved the shoulder of the road.
And striped their lot too, probably.
That's the thing is Balance is not striped. Only that real estate business. But there's times where like when you come through there, there's cars that nine inches, 14 inches, maybe even two feet of the cars out in the road.
Right.
Whereas like if there's somebody coming, you, I have to stop and wait for somebody to pass so I can actually go around because there's no parking.
Does the striping change where people have been parking? And I don't know if it matters, but...
A bit. I mean, there's been people that have parked many different ways over there over the past seven years since I've been driving.
And it's all in the right-of-way because I, I learned that, I thought those, I did not ever think that wasn't her property, but yeah, that's... Well, that's something that I think Elaine probably should look into is if she's able to stripe the right-of-way. I don't know if you can write that down for her to look into. Just something to, for her to, to look into to find out whether, when that was done, why, and whether it's permissible. But anyway, that's one thing that came up. The other thing that came up was, um, a piece of property on the Garvik property, it used to be the Wilson property, huge mess. In 1978, the property had been rezoned, I'm sorry, replatted. And then I guess some neighbors complained about it. They took away the right-of-way, which is Carolina Avenue in the plat that was recorded. And so it came before the town council and the town council declared that plat void and told them to refile the plat with the Carolina Avenue right-of-way on it, which they never did. And the plat got sold, the land got sold to its current owner, uh, who can't get a building permit. Yeah, no one knew about it until it was uncovered and now he has to basically go back and make it right, put the Carolina Avenue right-of-way on there. So that's one thing that came up. And a lot of discussion, but the end result was that he has, he has to go and, you know, record the correct plat that was supposed to be recorded back in 1978 and start from there. So that, that's, that's from the Planning Commission. And we have some people from the Planning Commission that have applied. We've got one opening right now. And so, uh, we can talk about that at our next work session, I guess, and vote on it at our next meeting. But if y'all have a chance to talk to anybody or to interview them before the meetings, that would be good to review the applications as well. All right, any other reports, committees and boards? We need to get out of here. Anything else? All right, tentative agenda is on September 26th. And we are adjourned. Thanks. Thanks.
Good job.
So.